Tonight is your opportunity to hear what you often have been doing over the past year, and more importantly, to ask questions, raise concerns and share your views. The purpose of this meeting is simple, to promote openness, transparency and engagement with our residents. To reflect on our recent work, look ahead to what's coming next, most of all, make sure your voices are there. Thank you again for joining us. Your interest and involvement are what keep this town strong. Why have a town council? To improve everyday life, from keeping public spaces tidy and safe, to supporting local festivals and ensuring our civic traditions live on. What sets us apart is our proximity. When something needs doing, we're right here. We're also your voice when bigger decisions are made, whether that's planning, transport or regional services. Most importantly, we make sure local money is spent on local needs, putting your priorities first. So what does Berwick-on-Tree council do? We maintain the things people see and use every day. Benches, bins, playparks, hanging baskets, bus shelters, especially split bulk and splash park, tracing that field. We support events that define Berwick, like the riding of the balance in the Sandman Queen. We get grants and hand up for help to groups doing valuable work across our town, from local cleanups, community gardens to cultural events. We review and comment on planning applications, ensuring that what happens here reflects local voices. The town mayor represents Berwick as civic events and charity leaders. Behind the scenes, we plan ahead through the neighbourhood plan and strategic plan, to ensure the town continues to grow up with purpose and pride. Over the past year, I've had the honour of representing Berwick-on-Tree as your town mayor. In 2025, 2024, 2025, I hosted sixteen events, including the very moving service on Remember the Sunday, which brought our town together in reflection and respect. I also attended thirty-three events at Prosperity Tree Office Spital, from school visits and charity fundraisers to community celebrations and official gatherings. These occasions are always a privilege. They give me the chance to show support for the fantastic work being done by local groups, volunteers and residents. Civic life isn't just about tradition, it's about connection, visibility and pride in our town. I'm grateful for every invitation and every conversation I've had with residents. Thank you to everyone who's welcomed me and the council into your events and activities, to be a real highlight of my time and my wife's time as mayor of Merit. Looking after our environment is one of the most visible and valuable parts of the work we do. Our town wardens work year round to keep Berwick Tree Office Spital looking their best. While we're having here, you may all just stand up, be self-aware. If not, it's the first few on the front seats here, go on, stand up. They are our outward facing members of our community and they do us proud. Our town wardens work year round to keep Berwick Tree Office Spital looking their best, repairing benches, cleaning bus shelters and supporting our events. And I'm delighted to say that the floral displays are starting to go up this week, bringing colour and vibrancy back to our town centre and green spaces for the summer. We've also made real progress at the Five Arches allotments, with new fencing and site improvements to support local growers and keep the sites secure and working. For a mayor this year, the town council has taken on responsibility for maintaining our war memorials, ensuring these important sites are respected and well cared for. Looking ahead, we're planning to improve more green spaces across the town. One example is a new wooden rock achieved from terrace which we're developing this autumn. Quite space for reflection, nature and community enjoyment. Our commitment is to make Berwick not just beautiful, but greener, cleaner and more enjoyable for everyone. As you may know, Berwick Town Council has a consultee on planning applications within the town. While we don't make final decisions, our views are taken into account by the planning authority. This is a part of maintaining an open and democratic planning system. Last year, we were consulted on thirty-eight applications, including everything from window replacements to large scale proposals like the Berwick Barracks speedup. Planning committee meets monthly and the public are welcome to attend. We also restarted work on the neighbourhood plan in 2024, reviewing the previous draft with input from the Thumbly County Council. Now that elections have passed, we plan to move forward a full community consultation, involving at least three public drop-in events, which are split between North and Berwick. So residents can help shape the final plan. Ultimately, with a completed neighbourhood plan, we will do a town-wide referendum. Your voice will help define the future of our community. Council services and assets. This slide highlights just some of the physical improvements and service enhancements delivered by Berwick Town Council. A new initiative from Berwick Town Council is an enhanced town centre street cleaning programme. Daily jet washing will begin on the first of June for a one-month trial period in partnership with the Northumberland County Council. This will be reviewed after the trial period, but work will significantly enhance the street scene and improve the visibility of it. We have a major problem in this town. It's hot seagulls. They won't be able to move, so therefore we've got to try and clean up after them because they won't clean after themselves. So we will try our best to actually improve that situation, make our streets look a little bit cleaner. We replaced twenty-five bins last year and installed fourteen seagull-proof bins and merrigates, helping to tackle glittering and waste management. We also refurbished and repurposed eight bins across other parts of the town. Benches have been a big focus. Fifteen new ones installed and over a hundred and twenty maintained. And at that point, I'll say we've got over three hundred benches in town. So we're gradually catching up with the last few years in maintaining and restoring all of our benches. That is a big part of our work. Again, thanks to our team for actually cracking all of that. In addition, we've adopted twenty previously unmaintained benches. Three new bus shelters are being installed and several others repaired where pounds were damaged by vandalism. Berwick Town Council continues to maintain playparks, which includes equipment, fencing, green spaces and pathways, and supports some community gardening projects, including work with the Greens as residents' association. Grants and local support. The town council continues to support local organisations through its grants program. In 2024-25, we awarded funds to eight local groups, supporting a diverse range of activities including arts, culture, wellbeing, sport and community engagement. These grants are designed to boost local projects and have a real impact on Berwick and surrounding communities. Among the recipients were Choices for Growth, C I C, Berwick Literary Festival, Sen Rog and the Berwick Film and Media Arts Festival, all of whom play vital roles in enriching community life. These grants demonstrate council's commitment to working with and supporting groups who help make Berwick a vibrant, welcoming and active town. Have you funded the town council? This slide explains how to Berwick Town Council is funded. Have any of you seen that?
No.
Okay, let it go through. So, town council's core funding comes from two main sources. The precept, which is for this current year, will be £401,705. And the section three fee man income, which will be £147,000. So the core income will be £548,775. The Berwick Town Council precept makes up less than five per cent of a band D council tax bill. This supports local services, staffing, grants, events and environmental improvements. Compared to other towns in the Thumblyland, Alex's Band D is £122,30. Morpus, £135,000. Exon, £115,000 to £125,000. And Berwick is £109,54 pounds for Band D precept. Berwick remains one of the best performing town councils in the county. That small contribution supports very visible, local and responsive services managed right here in Berwick. In comparison to other towns across the Thumblyland, Berwick's precept remains very competitive. Again, I'm going to read this for you now. Staffing costs as a percentage of core income for this current year, for Berwick is fifty-one point nine per cent of total budget. Alex is sixty per cent, Morpus is sixty per cent, Exon is sixty-four per cent. Note that the core income includes precept and section three fee man support. In conclusion, Berwick delivers indoor services, CCTV, events for the culture, with lower staffing costs than most comparable councils, reflecting strong value for money and efficient use of resources. Key point here is that Berwick operates with a leaner staffing cost relative to its income, and yet we deliver a wide range of services directly, including CCTV system etc. So while our staffing appears significant in absolute terms, it's actually proportionally lower than our peers and we get more direct impact forward. This helps demonstrate that we offer good value for money, governments and engagement. We've implemented a new government structure where all key decisions are made at full council. This ensures greater transparency and accountability than the previous committee-based structures. In addition, we plan to establish task and advisor groups that will involve local experts and residents to bring in specialist knowledge where needed. We're also committed to improving how we communicate with the public, including a full update to our website during the coming year to make it easier to access information and participate in council business. We're also continuing to improve how we communicate and engage with residents. Updates are readily shared via our website, social media and newsletters. We've made easier-to-access meetings, agendas and minutes. We're working to provide clearer explanations of how and why decisions are made. These steps are all about building greater transparency and trust in how your local council operates. Looking ahead, our priorities for this year. This slide sets up our forward-looking priorities for the coming year and beyond. So I'm going to again read this out for those who can't see. Seek new premises to reduce costs and explore cool location with Berwick visitor center. Enhance street cleaning in the town centre during summer months. Explore taking over synergy services from NCC to generate income and consolidate modern facilities. Improve green spaces we manage with a focus on biodiversity and sustainability. Strengthen events programme to boost community pride and participation. Vitalise the charter market to better serve traders and the public. Finally, to work closely with community groups, NCC and partners for shared outcomes. Getting involved. This slide is about how residents can get involved with the work of Berwick Town Council. We encourage residents to participate in council initiatives, either through public consultation, attending meetings or joining working groups. There are always opportunities to volunteer, whether it's helping at events, supporting environmental projects or assisting community groups. We'll be holding consultations and forums in the months ahead. It's vital that we hear from the communities so we can shape projects and services to reflect local needs. Now, it's almost too good to you. We've been sent some questions first in advance and we'll address those first. On that, if you have a question for us, we will answer it the best we can. Please raise your hand and ask what your name is, so we can make a note of it and follow up with you. No ulterior motive apart from if you do, we can't answer them tonight, at least we may actually respond. So, questions sent in in advance. Accessibility and infrastructure. Will the council consider installing a blue-handrail on scoped access to the beach near South Greenwich Road, which currently lacks one, making it difficult for disabled users? So our response to that. The promenade, including all the railings, is an NCC asset, but Berwick Town Council will happily work with Georginia as a county council of Spital and NCC to help the project carry on. Tourism and local economy. What more could the council do to support the tourism industry in Spital? Our response. Two years ago, Berwick Town Council invested quarter of a million pounds into Spital to install a flagship play area. Berwick Town Council are also looking into an overhaul of the splash park to ensure that its visibility remains for both tourists and locals. Berwick Town Council and NCC are working with prevailing services to help maintain the promenade and enhances the page which had with visitor satisfaction in the area. Berwick Town Council will happily engage with a group of businesses to see how we can work together to support or improve the tourism industry within this public. Another question. Who owns the cafe stroke arcade at Spital and can it be repainted? Response says, the building is owned and operated by a private company and therefore this work will have to be undertaken by the owners. Unfortunately, Berwick Town Council has no power to enforce any actions on the business. Next, four question. Now that the wooden bench has been repaired and repainted and the covered seating area at Spital, could the building itself be repainted? Our response, yes, this is on Berwick Town Council's summer programme. The work will either be undertaken by a warden team or the community planning team. Next question is with regards to the redevelopment. There's five questions here, so I'll do the response for each one in turn. So, question one was, why did the council submit only a thirteen-word supporting comment when over seventy formal objections and six hundred petitions were submitted? Petition signatures expressed opposition to the proposed molting redevelopment design. Response to that. The response summed up the decision that was agreed on to support the application. At the time of the application, support comments on the NCC portal outweighed the objections at three to one. Petition signed was not exclusive to Berwick residents and therefore their opinions should not be considered by Berwick Town Council. Question two. Why was negative feedback not acknowledged in the form of response? Reply. The public had the opportunity to express their negative feedback directly on the NCC report and Berwick Town Council's response was for the decision voted on by councils. Question three. At the public engagement event, seventy-eight per cent of contributions opposed the design. Why was the subsequent council vote unanimous in support? Response. At the meeting held by Berwick Town Council, the support to objections was fifty-fifty. Many of the objectors supported the premise of the project and not the design. The moltings had it explained there is no budget for a redesign and therefore are at a point of losing the opportunity. Berwick Town Council's vote is a saw fit as their duty as a council. Finally. Was a twenty point zero three million investment influence and improve the town and will not be available again? Berwick's heritage has not been disregarded. The meetings were all held in public for decisions transparency. Moving on. Public ground and cleanliness. Are there plans to refurbish or repaint the heritage signage across the town? Our response. These are an NCC asset. Our Berwick Town Council will work with the coal group, the NCC councillor for the area and NCC officers to ensure that they are brought back up to standards. As a start, our warden team will jet wash. Next question. Is there a schedule for power washing in main and side streets, including bird ness and weeds? Response. While street cleaning is an NCC service, Berwick Town Council recently agreed to a one-month trial of daily jet washing in four main commercial streets in the town centre to see if this makes an improvement. This is a marked improvement. Berwick Town Council investigate how to fund this move forward. Following on. Could the fronts of empty shops also be included in the power washing scheme? Problem then, no. Berwick Town Council cannot touch private property without the express permission of building owner. Otherwise, Berwick Town Council could be liable for any damage that may or may not be done caused by the jet washing. Next question. Was contact made with landlords about maintaining their properties and can the council provide an audit? No contact has been made with all building owners. Berwick Town Council needs to work with other organisations as part of the neighbourhood plan process to draft a letter with as much backing as possible. There has been contact made with two individual building owners over two specific issues, but neither of which have been met with positive response. Unfortunately, Berwick Town Council has no enforcement powers and unless a change is made to the national legislation, Berwick Town Council will only be able to lobby on behalf of residents. Move on to activities for children. Are there any plans for facilities such as escape park, pump track, bike track in town? Our response. Yes, a wheeled play facility is in Berwick Town Council's strategic plan. Officers have already begun to meet with partners and are in very early stages of the project. Our Berwick Town Council are also beginning to work with other organisations in the town to be able to deal with this project faster. Now, we've got one here that was said, put on our Facebook page, we're on submitted by the town council board. Can I ask why the local town council feel it necessary to purchase Barclays Bank and renovate its new office along with possible flats? Will this be discussed at the meeting, as I think it should be addressed for the public as a note seemed to be in the region of one million investment? Surely that's not up to town council to decide where it was spent? Concerned is as to be reimagined, the internal structure in the town council shouldn't really be landlords. Three hundred and forty-five pounds is starting point, as cost due to incur. Also, looking through the councillors for this year, are they monthly figures or yearly? Our response. Berwick Town Council currently rents three properties. Purchasing Barclays will allow Berwick Town Council to consolidate onto one site. Preferential terms of loans available would mean the value of purchasing and developing building would cost the same repayments as is currently spent on rent across the other three sites. But the value of money decreasing over time means savings in the future. The building presents an opportunity to offset some of the running costs with revenue generation. Again, a saving for the tax payer. The general power of competency allows Berwick Town Council to act as a business or individual in the same way as a borough or a unitary council. Unfortunately, the figures and questions are not valid to bad question here. We are unable to answer them directly. Should they wish to contact the office, their question will be answered. Can I just say, we're damned if we do, damned if we don't. People complain about empty buildings within the town centre. So when we look at maybe redoing one of those empty buildings, we then get down for actually to take away an empty building. But I do think that most of the people in this town would like to see the town centre improved and have more of these building projects again. So that's my personal thoughts and I'm sure it is for quite a lot of people in this area. On the Bridge Facebook page. The town centre health service carried out by the Berwick Civic Society. Civic Society will be invited as part of the neighbourhood plan process to discuss how the town centre health check can help develop the neighbourhood plan. To lack of public toilet provision stroke street cleaning in Berwick. Well, street cleaning in Berwick, I think we've covered already. Lack of public toilets. Public toilets are an NCC service. Berwick Town Council would happily work with residents and NCC to see how public toilet provision can be improved. As already mentioned previously, Berwick Town Council are embarking on a street cleaning trial. Question four. The Thumblyland County Council's constant bailing out to advance the Thumblyland, its development arm, which its website states is focusing almost exclusively on regenerating the Thumblyland. Where else? And which goes hundreds of millions to NCC. Two hundred and sixteen, two hundred and sixty-seven million in December twenty twenty-four. This is not an NCC, this is an NCC question, so we will pass this one to the NCC councillors. I'm not sure whether they want to answer the question.
I was one of two candidates that was put up against that one.
Speak up please, sort of, do you know?
Sorry?
Speak up.
Sorry, I was. I was one of two candidate candidates that opposed that bail out and one of five who voted against it, so whoever asked the question totally, totally agree with you.
Ideas for expenditure in two of Melton's Spital of town council funds extend nearly all money spent on Berwick Town Centre. Berwick Town Council has many projects for investment in other areas in the town. Spital has been heavily invested in over the last few years. Projects are now already under way in two of Melton, including the Eagle Wood Building Block, the extension of allotments, a trim trail and a community garden in Gardnership at Denise. So not all money you just spent in the town centre. Six. What did happen to the town council decision to appoint a town prior in twenty twenty-two? The motion was proposed by councillor Lindsay. There was no seconded, so the motion fell, which is minute number zero ninety-eight stroke twenty-two. Yeah, finally, one last one. Can you please mention the litter from the market traders? One in particular, especially clear plasticware. But a coastal town and its disastrous marine environment also looks awful to tourists and locals like you. The individuals responsible should be held to account. Our response, yes. Berwick Town Council will raise this with the coal group as NCC councillor and NCC civil enforcement. Those are all the questions that were written in in advance, so I will now open it up to the members of the public. But as I say, if you raise your, maybe stand up, raise your hand, let us know your name, don't make it fall off if you need it. Sorry, I'm not used to holding my phone and speaking in the same time.
Hold the microphone close to your mouth.
I'm here as part of the Civic Society.
Could you speak a bit louder, Mark? Put the microphone close to your mouth.
Close to. Yes, please. To talk about the health check that we carried out in March this year, or up to March this year, which identified a lot of problems in Berwick Town Centre. It identified increasing vacancy rates in shops. It identified a worsening or deterioration in the town centre environment. It identified a decline in pedestrian flows in the town centre around thirty per cent over ten years. There were many, a decline in rents of retail properties of thirty per cent over the last ten years. There were many other things that it identified. And we'd like to have an opportunity to discuss this with the town council, with NCC and with other local interested groups like the Chamber. I'm sure we'd like to be at that meeting. We're told that there's about the appropriate place for that to take place would be a town centre forum or a forum meeting. But we haven't seen one organised and they seem to just keep getting put off and brought back. We'd like to put pressure on the town council to make sure that that happens in the near future and to help us influence policy both here and at NCC to work together to provide a strategy to improve Berwick Town Centre. Thanks, Mark. On the actual town forum, that is organised by county council, but I think town council are aware of the situation as far as the late councilor's meetings. So yes, I'm sure we will organise a meeting and invite us, you know, interested bodies to it. I have one second question to ask, which is sort of individual and personal point relating to the neighbourhood plan. The town council are supposed to be, or are in charge of the process of preparing the neighbourhood plan. No one else can do it, so the town council really need to get on with it. The neighbourhood plan's been brought back to life last year, I understand, after lying fallow for five years. The document I've seen, I understand, was handed to the council by the planning officers of Northumberland. So it doesn't necessarily represent the town's view.
So it doesn't necessarily represent the town's view. If you are going to consult on that neighbourhood plan, then please circulate the up-to-date document so that we can review it and give you our feedback before setting up the series of meetings. Mark will definitely do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you may recall, when you were in the Chamber of Trade, we, as the Chamber of Trade, produced some leaflets that were given to Chris Pratt, the promotions officer at Ann Bracastle. He took them in turn down to coach company venues in Leeds, Harrogate, Birmingham, Coventry. They were written by the coach companies who were looking for new places to visit. He distributed our leaflets, one which had spittle and the golden sandy beaches, safe for children and families, dolphins on the photographs, the other one was for Berwick, the pier, perhaps seals, salmon, Elizabethan walls, the parish church, et cetera. And he gathered around two hundred and forty-five emails and addresses of organisations that wanted to visit the town. I then went, as chairman at the time, to see the manager of Morrison's to say we could put the postcode on the leaflets of Morrison's. The coach would go there, drop off the customers from the sweets, crisps, toilet. Then we turned it back to the town, dropped off the driver return, get his lunch, then go and pick him up, back to Morrison's, toilet, sweets, and continue on the journey. Fortunately, the manager said, we're not going to give the drivers a lunch, and that cost about seventy-five. And I found the booklet in the west end of the Dean, Hertford Park. The other one, it could be.
But John, that one, right? Brilliant idea. Let's revisit it again, okay? If you've got one of the leaflets, bring it in. But if you've got a leaflet, bring it in.
Got them printed, and I'm sure they could be found.
Let's revisit it again, okay?
Okay, the other one is the platform going north of Berwick, the railway platform. Across from there, you know what I'm going to say, is a fence, it's so high, it backs onto Network Rail. That could be covered with vistas printed locally at the time. That high, twelve foot long, it was like a hard plastic. The vistas go on and then they're covered with clean filler. That goes against the fence. Sheep wiring, the big square stuff, was against it, can't go away. In front of it, weed suppressing material, gravel. Anybody sitting at the platform will see vistas of Berwick, they will not see it as a past line. Just another idea. I don't think anybody's asked Network Rail if it can be.
I think it's a while back, John, it's a while back. But I think that the issue was, was its proximity to the live line. No, because you'd have to have somebody standing this side of the fence, right next to a railway line, a live railway line. And I think that's where the health and safety kicked in. But certainly if you know what it is, certainly we can investigate it again, but I think if I remember rightly, that was against.
Maybe that it could be applied from the other side of the fence.
We'll look at it.
Okay, thank you for that.
That's John Haswell. John Haswell. Anyone else?
Sorry, who's?
With it me, John?
Do you want it, Claire? Do you want it, Claire?
I'm not very good with these things either.
Close to your mouth, hold it close to your mouth.
Better, better?
Yep.
Great. John, you mentioned the seagull bins, which you've got in Marygate, which is great. Are there any plans to put more of those around the rest of the town? We get a lot of seagulls pulling rubbish out of the bin at Tweed House, which gets quite full, you know, on Main Street, the one by the roundabout sort of thing, by the War Memorial. I think because we've got the corner shop and we've got the takeaway, we get quite a lot of rubbish going in and out, and then the seagulls pull it all out. So I'm just wondering what your plans were there?
If I remember rightly, I don't want to commit to this, but I don't think there's much in our real budget for this year because we invested so heavily in bins from last year and have some spare still left at the end. Obviously, I'll have a look into it. I'm glad to see that the feedback from the bins of Marygate will be worth seeing. Thank you for that. We will look at it again. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Wendy Robertson, Rich, and Jessica. I was interested that you were telling us that half of the funds that the council are going to go on staff. So you're talking about quarter million pounds, fifty percent of five hundred and thirty-one thousand. Councillor Hawken, I think, was involved in the restructure of the staff. I'm just wondering if that could be explained to the town, how that's come about, and you know, how you sort of think that two hundred and fifty thousand pounds is needed for Berwick staff? Is that true, sir?
To run any service, you need staff. That wages bill covers the chief officer, our operating manager. Four members of staff in the town council office and our three wardens. Work doesn't get done without staff. I mean, you have some councils which have got fewer staff, but they will probably actually give away those services and have to pay someone else to do that work for us. We keep that work internally, which means we've got local folk. So when there's an issue straight away, we can direct the award and straight to it, and there's a problem. But we need those staff in the first instance. But what's been pointed out is, we've only got fifty-four percent?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-two percent of our money goes on wages, whereas other councils in this county, sixty percent is staff wages. So I don't think we're doing too badly.
And we have a law around law.
Yes, Rachel.
I've been trying to attend successfully to the residents committee for the Reenses of late. They have a functionally very active residents committee, and they do lots of events and look after their patch with lots of effort. Is there, are there any proposals from then the town council to encourage the re-creation, I suppose, of residents committees or other local bodies which encourage both voluntary but also partnership working to put into their local communities?
One of the first conversations I had with the new chief officer was on that particular point. He's very keen to see them reestablished again. Where he was from the past, there were some very strong residents associations, so yes, we will try and help with the reinstatement. But let's be honest, it's age-old adage. You don't just set up a residents association and just expect them to come along to meetings and just be talking. There's got to be some financial support there. So if residents of this community up here are expected to create a residents association, we as a town council have to support them. So if they want trees protected, if they want, you know, small things that we can actually improve to improve the area, then I think you've got to actually step up, put something in our budget to help them actually achieve that. Otherwise, what's going to happen with residents association? Anyone else to ask a question? Yes, sir. Hello?
It's nice to see.
My name's David Burke, I'm in Skeffle. I've been very concerned recently about the misinformation that's been put out by small group people, I believe, about the Waltons proposal. Mostly online, but recently officially, it's been delivered to hundreds of thousands of people. The Waltons, I think, have been incredibly important from cultural, social, communal, for many years now, with tens of thousands of residents every day, and they continue to be so. Is there any way that the town council could more vigorously support that proposal legally? As there seems to be a going, all the people who are against it, it seems to be, and the risk is, as you explained earlier, if this doesn't happen, if this primary application doesn't go through, the funding will go off and Waltons will eventually fall off. Is there any way that the council can voice their opinion more strongly?
I'll have a look with our chief officer and see whether, when we actually, when the planning application is actually heard down at county to see whether I can at least speak in behalf of the town council, in behalf of this community, on behalf of the silent majority. Because it's a silent majority that have been using that Waltons for years. And when we talk about. When we talk about heritage views, so the landscape changes all the time. And when I was a child, I can remember there was a very large shipyard shell of a building and muckle crane in front of that that obscured the actual view of the town centre. Iconic views of the town hall, that's when you stand on Scots Gate Arch and look down Marygate, that's our iconic view of the town hall. When people are on the train coming round and actually looking at our community, they look at the walls, they look at everything else that is. They're not going to spot the building. I mean, under the proposals about having this angled roof on top of the existing flat roof, that'll add another twenty foot to the height of it, you know? I'm sorry, there was an awful lot of complaints when we actually had the Premier Inn. The concern about the Premier Inn didn't fit into the actual townscape. Now, three years on, it's a successful business, actually helping a lot, supporting an awful lot of small businesses, and everyone's forgotten now about the actual design of it. Design is subjective. I can remember in nineteen ninety, there was a supermarket built along Walkgate, and at the time, won an architectural award. Thirty years later, it was derelict and taken down and now being replaced by greylast and hair. So therefore, it's very subjective. One person, you might, or Plengellers, will actually put on with it. And I personally, and the rest of the councillors personally, we feel that, we support that building because without it, we have no Waltons. Those that don't like it. First one, was it something on the back of the radio?
It concerns the Waltons, but not arguing about whether it should be there or not. There was a letter published in April twenty thirteen. Sorry, twenty twenty-three, in the Berwick Advertiser. May I read it, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
I have been pleased to hear of the project to develop and expand the Waltons Art Complex in Berwick. This is until I read last week's report. This report referred to the architects and their track record in transforming cultural destinations such as Fairfield Halls in Croydon. That is what I'm raising. Because I live in Berwick, was born in Berwick, but some relatives have a flat a mile from me. This, and I know they're currently, Croydon, the, is bankrupt. Part of it, I'll comment to, what part of it is it? That ran a long bell when we heard the news about Croydon being bought. With the Fairfield debacle, through filling the inside Croydon online news sites, detailed coverage of this. The seventy million Croydon project went over budget by thirty-seven million pounds. Now, a later report says it went over by forty-three million pounds. It's still incomplete at the time of its delayed reopening and has since struggled to present a viable programme and rebuild audiences. Those with overall, I want to safeguard our councils from falling into the same problem. Those with overall responsibility for the Waltons would do well to read auditors' reports on what went wrong on redeveloping the Fairfield Halls and learn lessons to prevent a similar fate befalling Berwick. It's a major cultural venue which is so important to the town. Now, with great difficulty, I have managed to get hold of some information on the report.
Right.
And to my shock, it actually went decides the Metropolitan Police.
Right, can I tell you that, Chris?
Can I just ask? Have all of the councillors who've been involved with this been fully informed of what has occurred at Croydon? And the auditors' reports of what has happened? And of the possibility of council people being held responsible for such things? And the.
The information you've got, right? The information you've got, the best thing for you to do is give it to our chief officer, Stephen, right? And we will pass it on to county council. Berwick Town Council.
Are you saying that you don't know this?
Well, you've just brought it to light now, and again, circumstance is totally different, you know? You can't, we can't, you have raised it, and county council officers will be made aware of it.
I've raised it, but it's already been proved.
It's fine, but I mean, the problem we have had with this Walting, this Waltings has been seven years in the making. And over those seven years, costs have gone up. Costs have gone up because of delays to actually getting plans approved. And then the Covid crisis came along, then all the costs of building supplies gone up. So initially it was for seventeen, eighteen million, but now it's twenty-eight million. So yes, the costs have gone up, but that's because of the delays and actually get to the situation we are now. But certainly, the information that you've given, we will pass on to the county council officers so that they're made aware of it before the councillors.
All of the councillors who are voting on this thing.
They are, that's county council. Yep.
Aware of what.
We will, we will, we will try, but you've got one, two, you've got two county councillors in this room at the moment, and they will actually, they will actually pass on.
Well, they're asked the county councillors that we are already familiar, because this is due to.
I just.
December twenty twenty-four.
Margaret, can I just say, when we talk about the Waltons, if I've said anything blank, it's because I am on the Strategic Planning Committee, which will, so far, not smiled, and you're not on yours, but I think you've escaped that.
Not at the present time, but not sure.
That is, could be the first of July or August, so that's coming up fairly soon. But what you can do, and I'm just suggesting this, you can be cop or ask me, who's in the Strategic Planning Committee? And send them what information you want.
It shouldn't be for me, an eighty-five-year-old.
No, Margaret, no, Margaret, give it to our officers, give it to the officers. We will sign it.
Both need due diligence.
Margaret, we'll do that.
To ensure that everyone's fully informed of what is to happen. Instead of being landed on, Croydon Council has failed to amend, partly due to the debacle.
I think we're all aware of the problems that concern. Okay, I think we need to move on, unfortunately.
And it thereby has gone on twice bankrupt since the public covered from.
So, carry on with the journey.
Yes, with reference to the panel of the council on the total.
But louder, please, John.
Louder. Out of the total of the responses to the council, only a handful of people in support of the project even considered the appearance of the building. Out of all of the people who objected, not. Out of all of the people who objected, not one had a problem with the improvements to the facilities in the building. Their main objection was solely to the appearance of the building.
And as I say, that's subjective. One person's ugly building is another person's.
But you should be learning how to responses and actually responsibly, and there are seven thousand people that signed a petition.
That, that's absolutely fine, and the ultimate decision is now made by County Councils. We've from Berwick Town Council, we have made our decision, we fully support it now, and we will continue to support it. And I will go down and support it on the evening when it's being discussed.
I'm sure you will.
Absolutely, because I was born and bred here. I found these towards back to twenty years of this town, you know, we would be here forever. So, next gentleman.
Thank you, Mr Gentleman. Uh, just like that, but um, I don't really appreciate my support for the Maltings in speculation about because of the content of what I wrote in a public forum. The gentleman's comment here is complete speculation. That's all I'd like to add.
Thank you.
Yes, there's one lady. Turn around now.
Thank you. Uh, I just want you to imagine what the responses were of the Berwick Town vote when Elizabeth said, we're going to build a wall around that.
With a flat top.
Just think about that for a minute. Uh, but I just want to read something that I put on public, uh, put on Facebook. And basically, uh, my partner and I live on Bridge Street and we have a commercial gallery on Bridge Street. And, uh, as Berwick residents, we do not want to live in a town that is looking like a flying ass cave. We want a vibrant, vulgar of you, Berwick. Change can be difficult, but it is necessary. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, you are.
All right, if you have seen. Yes.
Um, good evening, Ben Humphrey from the Straw Yards, uh, the Parade Barracks, um, oh, there we are, my friend, thank you. Um. I have to say, I've been very lucky to have moved here. I haven't been here as long as you, John, you know, two hundred and fifty years, you've been very good on. Um, I've been here five years, both my boys were born in Berwick, Puntree, and I count myself incredibly lucky to live here and to have made Berwick, Puntree, my home. Um, I've worked exclusively in theatre and cultural and heritage organisations my entire life. I'm creative consultant to National Trust for Scotland, I'm also a creative consultant to the Edinburgh Fringe. Um, and hopefully I won't see any of you in my other capacity as a Berwick senior presiding justice in the Magistrates Court. I have to say, I was very disappointed with the discourse surrounding the Maltings. Um, it, it belies our position as the happiest place in the UK to live. And I genuinely believe that we are happy place to live, and that's why we're separately here. Now, the older I get, the more I realise I don't know. But the one thing I do know is that anyone interested in culture, theatre or the arts, travel. And when they travel, they spend money. And suddenly, those problems that Mark brought up, things like shops being empty, things like footfall on the streets declining, go up. And that is not subjective, that is fact. And this is a once in a lifetime opportunity to create something brilliant for Berwick. And people will come, I can promise you that. And you may think it odd that one cultural organisation is standing absolutely behind another cultural organisation, almost in competition with them. I promise you, we're not. We at the Straw Yard wholeheartedly support the Maltings development, we wholeheartedly support what's on to her team. She has been absolutely fantastic, she's been welcoming, she's been supportive, and she has guided us all the way through our development stage over the last year. And the reason that we are able to operate is because of an organisation like the Maltings. So if we lose it, we're literally ripping the spirit out of Berwick. So please, please don't do that as a one to this.
Any more questions?
Yes, John.
Oh, sorry.
Your former deputy. When I, when I was, Graham Brown, when I was a councillor for the Castle Ward. Um, a number of people said to me how delighted they were with how the appearance of the town centre had improved. Albeit marginally, given the, you know, the large number of empty units, but the trees in particular were commented on. So my question was, when can we expect more trees? My second point is around traffic. Um, another point that was raised, not as often, but it's definitely an issue, I think, is traffic. I've never been in the camp that says we should not have traffic on certain streets because I think the traders would be very unhappy with that. And I think we need to ask them. Um, I would just be interested in traffic calming measures. I know it's an N, traffic is an, highways is an NCC issue, but I'm sure as a Town Council, we can um, work with them to reduce traffic speeds rather than move traffic. And in particular, I would see a zebra crossing on, um, Castle Gate. I would see traffic calming measures such as a raised platform at the top of West Street. On Bridge Street, I would love to see, uh, traffic slowing methods, you know, the raised beds on three or four locations so that wagons and cars can still access it. But no matter how hard they try, they won't be able to go faster than twenty miles an hour. And if you get twenty mile an hour traffic, it just will work very well with pedestrians. Um, and I think those two issues along obviously with the new Maltings will transform Berwick.
Thank you, Graham. On your first question, I had discussions with the Chief Officer about Graham's trees. And we are looking, we are discussing with County Council officers where we could possibly site some more trees on Marygate. So with that, your trees, I've forgotten, Graham. On the second point, quite honestly, the sooner you're back in the council, and we have got four spaces, the better. Because your skill set is much required for this council. We are very fortunate, you, you as a town are very fortunate to have a number of councillors now with such a broad range of skill sets that add value to this council. So Graham, the sooner you're back in the council, the better. Yes, you know my feelings about their Marygate, you know my feelings. If I had my way, I'd be getting a template of zebra crossing, getting the black face, black dog, eh, put the balaklava on, you go out in the middle of the night with white paint, paint on. And see a pedestrian crossing on Marygate because it's been needed for years. Because it's, it's, it's a disgrace. Again, that's, you know, the, the speed of the cars go down Marygate, we have made it our number one priority for a number of years, but County Council and highways keep on pushing it to the bottom of the pile. But we will keep on asking for that, but it's absolutely right. Anyone else?
Yes, I know. Michael, um, thank you. I'm going to stay seated, I'm live streaming our meeting and some people have sent some questions in. So just like can read them, place it. So Karen Page is asking, um. I don't know if you did mention something about the lack of rentals in town, she's saying it's desperate, not just for young people, we're stuck in the rent trap in our fifties. We both run independent businesses, add value to the town, bring visitors, but can't find decent standard accommodation to work and live from. Um, what can be done when so much housing is no second homes?
Dodgy, it's, it's a difficult one. Um, and I'll put my hand up, as a retailer in this town, I actually depend more and more on the visitors that we get coming to this town to actually keep my shop going. So that's both visitors to the hotel, but also to the, the rising wonder of Airbnb's that that come to this town. However, as a local, as someone who are in Prior Park, you know, I am quite aware of the situation when it comes to social rented houses in this town. One of the reasons why we're looking at the Barclays building is the possibility to actually have some flats there that we could rent out at reasonable rents for local people. Now, now we have a competency, we can be looking at this. Um, but it has to be part of a bigger project because it really needs County Council on board and housing associations to look at it. Fortunately for us, we've got, going to have, um, five arches, you know, the new properties might be building, they're just about finished there. That helps, that's forty-eight new buildings.
Fifty-nine.
Rent or rent by, that helps, but that's just scratching at the surface. If we're saying that we need another health check to look at numbers of Airbnb's, then maybe that's a possibility. Not the situation of seven units down the coast where seventy percent of second homes are occupied. But it doesn't take much to actually start going down that route. So maybe that's something that we will have to have a look at and maybe something, you know, second, you will make a note of that. Thank you, Gary, anyone?
Yes, Louise Love is saying, can the council, Town Council, do anything to enforce a tidy up on the O two building as it's the first thing people see as they enter the town and it looks awful.
Absolutely right, it does look awful, but as we say, we as a council don't have any enforcement rules at all. I, I don't know whether County Council enforcement, it's a difficult one, I'm sorry, George, I will get it.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, it's, it's a difficult one to get private, it's a high bar to intervene in a private property. It has to be in front of your public safety because there are rules to give more flowers to do that. Um, but I don't know, Brian, you.
Yeah. Right, hang on.
Yeah, I know the one.
Yeah, it's okay, John.
Yes, Brian Galph, also from the Civic Society. Um, we have raised this point with Rob Mervyn so many times. Um, it's been asked me, Rob Mervyn, Rob Mervyn's the Director of Development, who's also in charge of housing at the council. Um, or at the County Council. There are powers, um, under the Town Country Planning Act. Um, if, uh, buildings are letting down the town centre. Um, so it's not simply, it doesn't have to be on the grounds of safety. Um, if the appearance of the town is being spoiled by the runt of buildings, the council can take revenge. But they're always reluctant to take revenge because it's just money. Um, they have limited resources, staff resources as well as money. But it is a point we continue to pass on to somebody that's been raised at the Town Forum. Similarly, on housing, um, Rob Mervyn is putting together some ideas about possible housing initiatives in the town centre for the town more generally. And in your, um, neighbourhood plan, including the town planning sites and the boating sites. Um, so there are things that can be done, and these things have been raised with the council, um, the Town Council, the Civic Society and other representative organisations in the town that have an interest in this, we continue to press on.
Hello, Wendy.
Yes, thanks, last one, Fiona called though, why earlier in the meeting you were justifying costs of Berwick Town Council comparing them to other towns? So I wondered this myself because I remember councillors used to say, we have the cheapest precinct in Northumberland, but what, why is that irrelevant, irrelevant? Why is it relevant to compare?
How can you, how can you say the council, uh, council tax is too high? How can you say we spent too much on wages if you don't compare it with another authority?
I suppose because we only live in one place, I suppose that's why.
But we don't have anything else to compare us.
Well, but we don't have a choice of what we pay.
The only way you can say that Berwick has actually spent its money wisely is to look at the other councils within Northumberland and say, they are spending more of their money on wages than we are. That's what we've been criticised on and we're saying, well, no, when in comparison to other towns, we actually spend our money wisely and spend as little as possible on wages.
That's my last question.
Anyone else? Or Rachel, I don't think so.
Are you? Why not? It's a very quick one, John, don't worry. Um, you have mentioned in passing the issue of the buy market, the market, I have.
Charter market.
Sorry. Charter market. Um, we've talked a lot about Maltings, we've not talked about market, and I just wanted to pop that one back in because there is a lot of comment within the local press or in local, uh, social media. Um, Instagram, in local social media about Marygate and the environment and the changes that have happened since the nineteen fifties, et cetera. Um, so I just wanted to ask you a bit more about that, can you tell us anything?
Once we get control of the market, but it was still not there yet, no. I'm not in the head there. Um, first thing we look at is the bottom market. Up till quite recently, we had quite a thriving market in the bottom market on Wednesday and Saturday. We had Art of Books was there as one of the stores. Um, and there's no reason why that covered area couldn't be the starting point for an incubating unit for small people. For people who want to just start off stalls and we can be covered, we can have, you know, where the rain and so that is maybe put some kind of covering around, trying to make it windproof. Um, and certainly rainproof. And start there, as they get one, you can then look at progressing new stalls or interesting stalls opposite the street, pushing the existing stalls further up the street. To actually, I, I don't know. Retail's changed. In the past, when you wanted to get into the midst of a stall and you'll go round a number of pitches and you've actually built up a business to the point where eventually you might get a shop. And nowadays, what do people have when they have a business? They go straight on line and they run it up the bedroom, so therefore bypassing, um, stalls altogether. However, that's not to say that there aren't, um, local farms producing produce that actually want to sell it to their farmers market, et cetera, and that's another thing we could possibly look at. So, yes, possibility for growth, we need to get it first, but the long-term plan is just trying for that market with more interesting stalls, um, to create us all sorts. With the same, they're only going Wednesdays and Saturdays, I think we can look at other events as well. Anyone else? Yes? It was great.
Just a big thank you to John, there's been a Kenzie Deputy Mayor, thank you for an excellent, uh, explanation of what we've been doing as a council. Just quite a very short clarification, could you explain to people the difference between the Freeman and the Freeman trustees? Because we actually get our, uh, pre-sat from a charity that is half the council and half the Freeman.
Let me scroll me a bit deeper.
It's just, it said that, you said that we have the pre-sat from the Freeman, in fact, we get it from the charity of the Freeman trustees.
We take it apart. The, the, the Freeman trustees look after the land to means and the town hall. Um, in conjunction with Town Council, um, half the share of one of their land to means after expenses comes to the Town Council. When it first started off, it was a few hundred pounds a year, but fortunately as land values improved, so therefore, so that's the money going into the profits of the Freeman. And therefore, for you as residents of this town, you get a fifty percent cut or whatever that profit is. So that benefits us as a town. And what councillors keep talking about is, we want to use that money wisely, it's something that other towns don't get, that have the privilege of. They do get extra sources of income, all these other towns in market terms are talking about London, get other sources of income such as cemetery's and other things that their services have taken on board and markets. They are incubating, they generate more income, and we are very fortunate in the situation to have with the Freeman's trustees funding. We will try and spend it wisely. Um, I think we want to be more forward-thinking, uh, council. Councillors, again, we're not here just to sit, come along to meetings and just talk and talk, we actually need the action, which is why we have our five-year plan, which is why we have an action plan. We want to actually see this town improve. We want to do the big things, wish we could, and when I win the Euro million, we definitely will. But in the meantime, um, we will, as your Town Council, will try and move this town forward as the best we can do. We're all volunteers, we're not paid for this, um, but we do try our best to help the community. Thank you. Any more questions, shall we go on and announce? Yeah, okay, thank you. Yes, well, I mentioned at the meeting, but before you're clear on that through that door, please have a look at what charities are round about and see if you can sign up or anything. Volunteer, please volunteer, that's what the town is known for. Volunteer, please volunteer, that's what the town is known for.